Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the May 23, 2017, 6:30 PM meeting of the Titusville City Council. We have a quorum. I'll call the meeting to order. Is Pastor Lord with us this evening? There he is. Thank you, sir. If you would say the invocation. And please put a good word in for our unfortunate people in England who lost their lives because of terrorism.
Mm-hmm. You bet. Thank y'all for what y'all do. Richard Halverson was the chaplain of the U.S. Senate for about 15 years, and he had this prayer that I'd like to pray for us all here tonight. It says this: "Wherever you go, God is sending you. Wherever you are, God has put you there. Christ, who dwells, indwells you, has something He wants to do with you where you are. Believe this: Go in His love, His grace, and His power." Lord, we do thank you for all the opportunities that you bring into our lives. We want to pray your blessing, your presence, your wisdom on this meeting tonight. We do want to lift up all those families, Lord, affected by terrorism. And we ask, Lord, that you would just send the right people to them at the right time to come alongside and comfort them and just be with them during this time. We ask for safety in Titusville here, and we ask for your direction and wisdom in everything that goes on. Thank you for each person that's here tonight, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir. If you will join me in the pledge, please.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, clerk, if you'd like to read the rules for speaking to council?
Yes, sir. Individuals wishing to speak on public and non-public agenda items must complete a sign-up card and present it to the clerk prior to the item being introduced. Those wishing to speak on quasi-judicial public hearings must complete a sign-up card and sign the oath. Individuals wishing to speak on non-agenda items may do so under petitions and requests from the public present. This opportunity is offered twice in the meeting, and individuals may speak at either the first or second petitions, but not both. No sign-up card is required. Sign-up and oath cards are located on the table in the back of the council chamber. Citizens shall not comment on any issue more than once during the meeting. All comments except petitions and requests must address the pending issue, and citizens will be given three minutes to speak on all items.
Thank you, clerk. Our next item is approval of the minutes from regular city council meeting on April 25, 2017. Do I have a motion? Or are there any additions, deletions, and corrections first? Seeing none, I have a motion.
Motion to approve the minutes.
I have a second.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, like, sign. Passes unanimously. Next is special recognitions and presentations. Mr. City Manager?
Yes, sir. We have, from our Development Services, the Employee of the Month for April 2017 is Mandy Lamote, and Peggy Bousaka will read a citation.
I'm proud to be up here two months in a row. I'm starting to feel like I'm a TPD member.
Giving citations.
Yeah. This is Mandy. She's the Employee of the Month from April 2017, and I want to tell you that this was not per-- this nomination was given by a different department. And it's an entire page long, and if I read all of it, Mandy will be very upset with me. But she-- the reason that she was nominated for this primarily was because of the assistance that she gives with Titusville Talking Points. Most of what you see in the development part of Titusville Talking Points has had Mandy's touch put on it. In fact, because she is so active with the fact that every site plan and every subdivision in the city is coordinated for review by Mandy. So she is pretty much the wheels that make the process work. She has also recently discovered a glitch that was in the HTE system that caused the amount of money being recorded to be different from what was input. And for a while, we thought that the staff was making problems. Mandy's the one who figured out that there was a ghost in the machine, and so she has helped us straighten that out. She also assists routinely with many employees with lean Six Sigma projects and has been on several teams. She also routinely gathers information for Friday Fast Facts on her day off. Her day off is Thursday, and that's our deadline, and you will get the Friday Fast Facts from Mandy, even though she's supposed to be doing whatever it is she does on her day off. And so I want to read to you the specifics that was given about the Talking Points, and it says, "Although there are other departments represented within the magazine, Development and Redevelopment presents a hu-- I'm sorry, represents a huge portion of the magazine and generates most interest and scrutiny from citizens of Titusville. Once the magazine draft is finalized by Community Relations Staff, it's given to Mandy, who proofreads the draft for errors. Normally, this is done under a very tight deadline. The last issue was needed ahead of schedule for a Saturday morning presentation, and so there was a real-time crunch. The issue was finalized on a Wednesday afternoon. This left one day for proofreading and printing. Make it highly unlikely the issue would be completed by Saturday. Even though the draft was not expected back prior to the deadline, it was sent to Mandy at the close of business on Wednesday. Unknown to the-- excuse me, to the C.R. staff, Mandy printed the file, took it home, redlined, and made a special trip to City Hall the next morning to hand-deliver, even though it was her day off. The printing company moved the city to the front of the line, and enough issues were completed by Friday afternoon for the Saturday presentation." The majority of what I've told you, the author says, was submitted without addressing Mandy's normal responsibilities, and I call that going the extra mile. So we're very proud to have Mandy with us.
Absolutely. I want you to know how this young lady volunteered, or she came to work for the city of Titusville, and I knew you were going to do good.
Thank you.
Congratulations. This is for you. Hold on, we'll get a picture.
I'll be private.
Absolutely. You got it?
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next item is Titusville Environmental Commission Memorial Bench in honor of Tony Caramellis. I always spell-- I always pronounce it wrong, but--
Good evening, council. My name is Eddie Galindo. I'm our Natural Resources Planner and Liaison to the Titusville Environmental Commission. We're here tonight as the official unveiling of the Tony Caramellis Memorial Bench that was purchased by the CRA. This event was actually planned a couple months back, and it was planned to be outdoors, and it rained. So this time around, we decided to do it indoors, and I'm grateful that we did that. It's awful. So I do have a letter here from the former chairman of the Titusville Environmental Commission. He couldn't be here tonight, but he wanted to make his words known, so I'm going to read that. And then we have some members of Mr. Caramellis's family and some of the members of the Titusville Environmental Commission, and if they'd like to speak, I'd welcome them to come up. So this is from Mr. Dean Pettit. "For 16 years, I had the honor of serving on the Titusville Environmental Commission as both a member and its chairman, and one of the biggest honors was the chance to serve with and get to know Tony Caramellis. Tony was easily the greatest champion for the natural environment: trees, trails, and waters in and around the city of Titusville that I have ever known. And many of his accomplishments will live far beyond any of us and provide enjoyment for generations far into the future. Among his accomplishments are playing a crucial role in the development of the Chain of Lakes Park, the Wellfields Trail, the recognition of Titusville as a Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation, and the beautification of many of our local parks, including development of the pond at Sandpoint Park and the planting of the cypress trees that surround the park. During all the years that I served with him on the Environmental Commission, I had come to realize that no one loved more and worked harder for their community than Tony Caramellis, and we are all better off for his love and dedication. Signed, Dean Richard Pettit."
Very nice.
"The bench is located on the west end of Sandpoint Park. It's adjacent to U.S. One. When you make a right into the park, it's on the right-hand side. I'd encourage anyone to stop in and check it out. It's a very beautiful bench in a very scenic location."
I did go past it after I read this down. It is very scenic and a beautiful tribute to a wonderful man. Well, thank you.
So if any of the members of his family would like to come speak, I'd invite you to.
We just would like to say thank you. Thank you very much for everything everyone did to help put the bench together, and everything that's on there is very nice. So thank you all.
Great. TEC? Any speakers?
I'll say so.
I feel bad, because I wouldn't want to neglect this person. I'm Phyllis Lackey. I was lucky enough to be an alternate member and regular member and serve alongside of Tony. There's not a day that goes by when I'm not either at Sandpoint Park, the beach, Fox Lake Park, the bike trails, that you don't feel something he has done. And particularly with our tree designation, one of the first things I-- first meetings I recall, like, eight years ago, when I joined, he always had the maps and plans of things from five, 10, 15 years prior. So when he logged in his notebooks, when we had maybe a binder, he'd say, "I've got that." So the progress that I've seen in Titusville with some of the things that Tony, along with Alex Chamberlain, is too, that they instituted in Titusville, are still here, and they'll be here for generations to come. So he was a very special man.
Very nice. Thank you.
I'm Michael Mijack, and I'm also on the Environmental Commission. I met Tony in 2006 when I was a cub master for PAC 488, and I was looking for something for my boys to do for a conservation project. And Tony says, "Well, I've got trees. How would you like to plant trees?" And I think about 150 trees later, and about three or four years of boys, we managed to get quite a few of them to earn their conservation badge. There was many, many times when I would run into Tony here or there, and he was always doing something, either planting trees, or planting trees, or planting something else. I've even run into him out at the Mockingbird mulching facility, grabbing mulch so he can go back and plant more trees in buckets and pots and stuff. In fact, I think the last time I saw him was in November before he passed. And I just happened to run up there. I was looking for wood to take out on a campfire with some Boy Scouts, and Tony was there loading up another bunch of buckets. And when I heard of his passing, I was gone that Christmas holiday. The first thing I did was I came and I asked Titusville to participate on that commission, because I knew it was full up until then. So in a way, I feel like I'm walking in his footsteps or trying to carry on his legacy. Tony was a great man. Over 20-some-odd years' experience, both in the men's garden club, which you should get up and talk about that, too, as well as what he did for the commission and many, many countless projects. So I thank you for the opportunity to honor him this way.
Thank you, Mike. Anybody else like to speak? Yes, ma'am.
Yes, I would like to say something about Tony Caramellis. I had the honor of knowing him for 14 years before he passed away, and he was such a gentle, knowing person. I've never met anyone like him before or since. He had so much knowledge and wisdom, and yet he was humble in his approach to teaching a person. And I'm talking about this as far as the Men's Garden Club of Titusville, which I'm a member, and Tony was a member there, and he might have even held office in that organization for a long time. But my memories of Tony were at the tree farm, not so much with the TEC here, but at the tree farm, and he was forever planting little seeds of podcarpus, or oak, or maple, or something. He had a section here, and he had a section there, not overtaking anything, but he would just do his own thing. And he'd come in there and plant these little seeds, and by God, if they didn't come up, and then as they grew up, he would put them into bigger pots and pots, and then pretty soon, you knew they were either for sale, or they were planted in the city of Titusville. And I used to call him Johnny Appleseed, because he was just always planting stuff. He had a wealth of knowledge, and he was just such a wonderful person. I miss him personally, myself. I miss him, because he was such a-- he was such a model, a model, of what a human being should be. And I'm sorry.
That's all right. We understand, ma'am.
I guess that's all I have to say. Thank you very much for the bench. I went down there, and I sat there, and I reflected on my memories of Tony, and it's a beautiful place, and I believe he planted the bald cypress that are there surrounding that area, and so it's very much his place. It's very special. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? I don't see anyone getting up to the family. Thank you for sharing Tony with us. He's a wonderful man. Thank you. Mr. City Manager, next item, Support Services.
Yes, sir, and council, this is the-- in the series of our individual directors. This is the Support Services presentation. It's about 11 minutes, and Support Services is what we refer to as the engine room. It's what keeps everything together in the city. And Assistant City Manager Tom Abate is here to do the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council. It's my pleasure to present this evening's Department Spotlight that showcases the many accomplishments of the Support Services Department in 2016. In producing this 11-minute video, Community Relations was given wide latitude. I asked them to keep it short, informative, and entertaining. Well, it certainly is short and informative. Two out of three isn't bad. As far as entertaining, well, it does poke fun at me, so I guess I reserve judgment whether or not it's entertaining after you see the video. But the bottom line is, the focus and takeaway from this video you're about to see is that Support Services is staffed by 48 very dedicated, hard-working, and talented people that take great pride in their daily job of keeping, as City Manager said, the engine room of the city operating. We keep things purchased, keep people paid, computers running, all the unsung things which allow our operational people to do their jobs without having to worry about things going well inside City Hall. So, without further ado, we'll go ahead and put the tape on.
Hello. My name is Tom Abate, and I am the Assistant City Manager for the City of Titusville.
That doesn't even sound anything like me. Oh, yeah, that's much better now.
Hello. My name is Tom Abate, and I am the Assistant City Manager for the City of Titusville. I also have the privilege of overseeing the Support Services Department. We are a combination of eight unique and highly professional work centers, which, as the name implies, provides the material support that helps the other city departments continue doing their good work for our citizens. The department consists of Human Resources, Customer Service and Utilities Billing, Information Technology, Finance, Special Projects and Grants, Purchasing, Community Relations, and the Municipal Marina. Let's take a look at all the great things our employees have accomplished this year. Community Relations is responsible for the city's interaction with its citizens, including television broadcasts, audiovisual productions, print, web, marketing, and social media production. Our media specialists produce a multitude of proclamation videos, public service announcements, and video projects each year. They also provide technical support for special events and city training, and provide graphic concepts and designs for a wide variety of projects. Every year, we broadcast over 80 live city government meetings throughout the central Florida region on Spectrum, Channel 498, and AT&amp;T U-verse, Channel 99. The city's channel is also available online via ustream.tv, and meetings are livestreamed and archived for later viewing on the city's YouTube channel. One big achievement last year is the new and improved Titusville Talking Points. What started out as a quarterly one-page document has now grown into a multi-page, full-spread professional magazine with feature articles and updates on development occurring throughout town. The magazine is available in limited print and on the city's website in a new digital flipbook format. A companion video is also produced, and both can be found by going to titusville.com/talkingpoints. Our department also designs and maintains the overall look and navigation of the city's website and provides oversight and assistance to city departments for their respective web pages. We are also responsible for posting regular news items and promotional material for city-related events. We are constantly analyzing statistics provided to us by Google Analytics to track how our citizens use the website and how we can make improvements to it. As part of our community outreach, we oversee the city's Facebook and YouTube channel, two mobile apps, and a web-based system that allows citizens to submit and track their concerns. This assists the city advocate Jim Thomas in his daily interactions with citizens who need information or are seeking resolution to their concerns. Community Relations is a member of the Titusville Area Visitors Council, Visit Florida, and is a board member for the Florida Public Relations Association, enhancing professional development and building promotional partnerships within the community. The Information Technology Department is responsible for the citywide computer network and all devices attached, both hardwired and wireless. Using fiber optics, the overall wide-area network connects 19 city buildings located throughout the city, each with their own local area network. This ensures the 410 employees in eight departments containing 36 divisions are able to serve our citizens efficiently, effectively, and in a timely manner. Notable achievements for 2016 include replacing a total of 61 desktop computers, 16 laptop computers, two network core switches, three network Tier 2 switches, three network edge switches, two scanners, a network firewall, six network printers, and 41 desktop printers. We also added seven rugged tablet computers, seven virtual servers, 2,000 feet of Cat 6 cable, six cameras, and three voice-over IP telephones. By virtualizing the servers instead of using physical machines, we were able to achieve a reduction in electrical consumption of approximately 6%. We continued the development of our backup disaster recovery site, doing the work in-house and repurposing older equipment. This has resulted in almost a 90% savings on the total cost. Last year, our Help Desk System resolved 3,417 trouble tickets for users. Almost 82% were resolved within two hours and without having to dispatch a technician. Our Microsoft Exchange email system processed well over 20,000 legitimate emails last year while blocking over 8,000 unsolicited spam emails daily. One success story this past year is the increase in occupancy at our municipal marina. It's huge, and I mean bigly. This past year, the occupancy rate rose from 60% to a steady 94%. Much of this is due to facility improvements, the very knowledgeable and friendly staff, the competitive pricing, and the amenities the city has to offer. The marina is going strong and doing great again. That I can tell you. In 2016, the city made renovations to transform the previous manager's office into an indoor lounge for our guests and customers. The new lounge comes with comfortable overstuffed furniture, a big-screen television, and a microwave. We also upgraded the existing bathrooms with new tile, paint, and accessories. Along with this project, we redeveloped two small showers into one large handicap-accessible bathroom with a shower. The ship store has been totally remodeled with a new layout, the addition of a coffee bar, new clothing line, and many new products for sale. The purpose of the Finance Department is to safeguard the assets and manage the financial affairs of the city, including revenue collection, real estate, cash disbursements, accounting and financial reporting, investments, and debt management. Using generally accepted government accounting principles, we provide timely advice to the city management and elected officials on issues affecting the current and future financial affairs of the city. Each year, the Finance Department is responsible for compiling the city's annual budget of approximately $118 million. Other important functions of the department include-- For 33 years running, the city's Finance Department has received the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting from the Government Finance Officers Association for exceeding the generally accepted accounting principles in our annual financial reports. The Finance Department is continually striving to improve processes and achieve better efficiency. To that end, we are currently working on several projects, including converting to electronic timekeeping, instituting an integrated payable solution to streamline city accounts' payables, implementing treasury solutions to streamline cash handling and expedite the posting of deposits into city bank accounts, and enhancing financial reporting efficiencies through new CAFR online tools and advanced report writing. The Human Resource Office provides a full suite of HR services for a workforce of approximately 500 employees. These services include payroll, health benefits and wellness programs, employee assistance program services, workers' compensation and risk management, training, union contract negotiations, employee compensation and retirement, staffing, and employee recognition. We strive to attract, motivate, and retain highly qualified employees, screening 1,886 applications in the year 2016. Last year, Human Resources worked to implement and continue a number of initiatives for the benefit of our employees, including continuing with the second year of the three-year pay study in an effort to improve recruitment and employee retention by seeking to align employee compensation with similar positions found in other organizations and municipalities; continuing employee development initiatives such as the three-phase employee evaluation procedure; maintaining a healthy workforce through partnerships with Premise Health and Parish Medical Center with an off-site clinic for employees and their dependents; continuing the city's wellness program, which includes the annual employee health fair and health risk assessments. This year's fair drew over 200 people and provided blood pressure checks, flu shots, and skin cancer screenings; the continued development of our risk management safety programs and training as part of our self-funded workers' compensation program. Our outlook for the coming year includes working with the Finance Department to implement an automated time tracking program, which will streamline the processing of employee attendance tracking. The plan is to go live using a pilot group within the next few months. The Customer Service and Utility Billing Department consists of 15 employees serving 21,000 customers in the billing and payment for utilities and other city services. Our department also handles utility and stormwater billing questions, utility service requests, temporary service turn-on/turn-off orders, and we schedule payment arrangements with citizens in need of assistance, as well as approve certain adjustments to utility bills. The Field Services Section handles utility reconnects, water meter re-reads, and water meter tampering inspections and data logs. Last year, there were approximately 220 utility tampering cases reported. Throughout 2016, the department processed approximately-- This year, we are working with the Stormwater Department to transfer stormwater billing to the Brevard County Tax Collector's Office. We are also in the process of creating a procedure to ensure billing accuracy. The Purchasing and Contracts Division provides procurement services to city departments in order to promote the effective, efficient, and economical purchase of all supplies and services, ensuring the city maximizes its return and complies with legal purchasing requirements. The annual purchases handled by this division in 2016 exceeded $24 million, of which 6.3 million were from local vendors. Purchasing and contracting is also responsible for administration of city contracts, city purchasing card program with 160 users, disposal of city surplus assets, and disposal of city scrap. The Special Projects and Grants Division is responsible for helping city departments and divisions obtain grant funding to help offset the costs of eligible programs. This department is also assisted with coordinating the annual fireworks show for Independence Day celebrations. Overall, the single-person work center wears many hats, such as Lean Six Sigma Coordinator, Emergency Management, Derelict Vessel Removal, Strategic Planning Performance Measures, Various Project Coordination, Grant Research. various project coordination, grant research, special events administration, Pritchard House liaison, administrative policy coordination. One important role stood out last year in the aftermath of Hurricane Matthew, where the Special Projects Coordinator acted as the FEMA coordinator for the city and worked as the liaison to the federal government for disaster recovery reimbursement.
As you can see, the employees in the Support Services Department are continuously working to ensure the city's government has everything it needs to function and provide the important services our citizens expect and require. They truly are the engine that keeps the city running. Thank you.
I don't know, but I think we've got to give them a round of applause on that one. They must love you, Tom. Or they wouldn't have done you that dirty, I think so.
It's a privilege to work with such a talented group of staff.
And we appreciate them. Please, would anybody else like to make any comments? All right? They're all afraid that they'll get one of those things. Next item, letters of appreciation, Mr. City Manager?
Yes, sir. I'd like to read for the record the letters of appreciation. First, from Community Development is Mr. Tim Ford, a redevelopment planner; Mandy Lamotte from the Development Office Manager; Trevor Trafigan, senior planner; from our Fire Department, Chad Lindquist, who is a Fire Division Chief, Operations; Adam Valklin, firefighter lieutenant paramedic; and Jessica Trevesa, financial analyst one.
Thank you. Next item is Boards and Commissions. Sir?
The terms of members Mary Polk and Michael Van Huisen will expire on 31 May 2017. They have expressed their willingness and desire to continue to serve on this authority to have requested reappointments to a four-year term to expire on 31 May 2021. Included in this request is a resolution from the Board of Commissioners of the Housing Authority to the city of Titusville, Florida in support of these reappointments of Mary Polk and Michael Van Huisen. There is currently one application on file for consideration, Ms. Jennifer Taylor, who has expressed her willingness and desire to serve.
Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Sir, I would, actually, I would move to approve, or actually, I'd move to nominate Mr. Van Huisen and then also Ms. Taylor.
Do I have a second? I hear no second. Well, I guess you don't really need a second on appointment, do you? Mr. City Attorney?
Well, we're going to vote, so yeah, he can appoint. Certainly be a second, or you can ask if there's any others.
Okay. Are there any other nominations? I hear no nominations. I guess at this point, we vote on your motion. All those in favor, say yes. All those opposed? Sir?
Discussion, for sure.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, discussion, please.
Sure. And thank you for that, sir. So, number one, it is with both appreciation, it is with appreciation for the service of both Ms. Polk and Mr. Van Huisen for their service and time on the board currently, and for the service that they've already extended to the city. Traditionally, I would be, I would be very comfortable that if a person has been serving on the board, they've done a, met all the obligations of their service and helped the community. I am apt by default to reappoint them, I think probably out of both tradition and service and to inspire volunteering. But here's what I believe, is that in the next year and a half or so, or the next two years, I think that we're going to be talking, I think that we have an opportunity to talk about poverty, affordable housing, and that the Titusville Housing Authority can be a component to that discussion, but I think the breadth of that discussion is going to be larger than it traditionally has. Being said, and what I know of Mr. Van Huisen is that his service to our community has extended, and not to default Ms. Polk, but his service to our community, you know, I personally have had the opportunity to serve with him in the Titusville Chamber, his work with the Parish Auxiliary. I think that that is a component, that if you add a board member, the value that that board member would bring are those things, and then also in relation to being able to, quite frankly, help folks that may not necessarily see some of the challenges in our city with low income, that he has an opportunity to meet with people that may not themselves be experiencing low income and help them understand that a little bit better. And I think that's a skill that, as a board, is an effective skill. For Mrs. Taylor, for Ms. Jen Taylor, what I can share with you is that for as long as I've known her, she has been abundantly committed to issues of homelessness, issues of poverty, and when I mean committed, I think well beyond just saying, you know, we need to do something. I served with her on the board for I Dignity. She looks at systemic issues, and she has been in the community trying to adjust systemic issues for, you know, since the nineties, probably. She's taken part of the North Brevard Coalition of Human Services since about day one, which is all of our nonprofit agencies who try to deal with socio-economic issues. She's, you know, she is a smart lady. Her career was at Parish as a nurse and a technical at that. And so I just think that there is a skill set that would be relevant to not only the way that she would look at things, but the actual things that she could bring in relation to the priorities that she's already been working on over the years. Subsequent to that, not to cut Ms. Polk short, but I think that as we look at the neighborhood revitalization plan that we adopted, that one of the components to that, to that program is that there is a board that addresses multiple issues inclusive of housing and so forth and so on. So my hope would be that Ms. Taylor would be afforded the opportunity to serve on the Titusville Housing Authority, bring her experience and bring her knowledge to that organization, and see as they continue to move forward that it's in line with the other organizations. And my hope would be that Ms. Polk might consider taking her knowledge from the Housing Authority and maybe serving on this other board where I think it would be applicable. That would be my hope, but that would be the rationale for Ms. Taylor and Mr. Van Huisen, and my hope would be that Ms. Polk might consider serving on another board where her knowledge would be effective as well.
Member Nelson?
I had some questions about that because I've known Jennifer Taylor forever, like you, and she is very involved in working with the homeless and disadvantaged, and she's been doing that for years that I know of. On the other hand, I hated the idea of cutting one of the others out. I don't know either of the other individuals. So that was, that was sort of my concern, but I understand where you're coming from and that she might be a, she would be a good addition. And hopefully, Ms. Polk would turn around and agree to serve on one of the other boards.
I know Mr. Van Huisen's here, so.
I agree.
Okay.
Member Diesel?
I pretty much have the same concern, that I know Ms. Taylor very well, and everything you said is absolutely, you know, second, third, fourth, that motion. She not only works hard with the homeless, but she works with students, she works with, you know, has communicated with me at Titusville High School for fixing some needs there. She's just tremendous. But I have the same problem that Member Nelson has. I don't know Ms. Polk, and I am familiar to some degree with Mr. Van Huisen. It would have seemed to me that if we, and maybe you have more knowledge on all of these than I do, except maybe Ms. Taylor, I think we're all there, but it looks like it would be a termination of someone, and I hate to do that with absolutely no knowledge of the shortfalls that might have me vote to terminate. That's my concern.
Member Stokel?
I just wanted to, I'm on the same boat as you guys. I do know Mr. Taylor pretty well. Upon looking at Ms. Polk's application, I do see in her application it says she is open to other possibilities, so I don't know if that's something that we could perhaps reach out to her with other vacancies that we do have, and then allow for Ms. Taylor to come into this role and Ms. Polk to still be a part of this board.
And Vice Mayor?
Thank you. And so, you know, from a level, from a level of comfort, I understand the terms expiring. So the challenge of the Housing Authority is that it's under sunshine, right? So the only time that we can talk with them is right here, right now, which is a bit of a challenge. So I guess, two. One is, yes, a termination of service, and I would agree with that, because anytime you're kind of volunteer, willing to help, you want to get them engaged. I think ultimately, though, ultimately what it comes down to, and what I don't, what I'm not suggesting is to rush a decision that if we have, you know, it expires at the end of the month, but if we can get a month amendment on that or something like that, that would be fine, but as not to rush the decision, but what I would say, what I feel is that the measurement isn't necessarily on the individual, truly my measurement is on what are we getting from the Titusville Housing Authority? And if you were to ask me that, I think that, I think that there's more opportunity how we could include our efforts or combine our efforts where I think that there is some missed opportunity, and I think there's some larger systemic issues that go along with that, and hence why I go, is the performance in line with what the city is trying to accomplish, and are we all trying to accomplish the same thing together to serve both our community, North Brevard, and the area? I think that there are substantial gaps in that, and I think that that's long-term, that there are gaps in that. And so I, what I do know is that Ms. Taylor is unbelievably competent in addressing that. So, and what I hear from everybody is everybody going, yeah, Ms. Taylor, we just don't want to take away from Ms. Polk. So I can understand that. You know, if, if as a board we're not comfortable with moving forward, I would be happy to move forward with Mr. Van Huisen, appoint him if we can have a, I don't know if a month extension per appointment, but otherwise, I would go, you know, I'm sorry. I would, I would feel comfortable with Mr. Van Huisen for sure. I would feel very comfortable with Ms. Taylor, but what I don't want to do is delay Mr. Van Huisen if we're all in agreement on that, and then you tell me what you all want to, you let me know what you want to do.
Okay. Before I, I'd like to speak.
Yes, sir.
First, I want to let you know that unless, City Attorney, correct me if I'm wrong, we can talk to members of outside boards and whatnot, any member of council?
That's correct.
Yeah, so you said we couldn't speak to them? We can speak to them. We can't speak to each other, but we can speak to members of the board. Second thing is, the Housing Authority, and having been on it a long time ago, but nonetheless, same authority, is different than the rest of our boards and commissions. We really don't directly control them. We do appoint people and certainly hopefully have some sway over what happens, but it's not the same as our commissions. They work for HUD, actually, so it's a little bit different type of board. Thirdly, in reading this, I'm not sure this doesn't just confuse it more, but the members are appointed by the mayor with the approval of city council. So let me do this, maybe this works out. Let's deal with Mr. Van Huisen's nomination. If somebody wants to do that first, to get that out of the way, and then we'll go from there. Does somebody want to make a, before I do that, is there somebody wants to speak before we do that?
No. Oh, take that back.
Take it back.
Take it back.
Member Diesel, will you defer? Okay. Member Stokel?
I was just going to say, if we can, go ahead and move ahead with the one nomination, and then maybe reach out to Ms. Polk before voting on it if we do have some time to see her comfort level. Just from reading hers, it looks like she, she really just wants to make a difference, and if there's perhaps another board that she can bring her expertise to, and she feels confident, just before we make the decision for her, if we have that time. That's kind of what I would like to do.
Let's deal with that after we deal with this vote. If you want to make that, did you make the nomination? I'm sure, just the one person, right?
I make a motion to approve Mr. Van Huisen for the next term.
And I will concur with that, so I'll make the mayor's decision on it, I guess.
Do you need a second?
I don't think so. We don't need a second on nominations, do we?
No. If you're going to move forward with the appointment of Mr. Van Huisen, you've stated that, and now you'll take a vote on your appointment.
Okay, yes, we're up to that point. Will all those in favor of Mr. Van Huisen say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? Not hearing any passes unanimously. Congratulations, sir. Now, this is somewhat of an unusual situation, but I don't know if we can, you're asking that we give, we go, delay this vote. Is there any issue with that, City Attorney?
The term will expire May 31st.
Oh. So. So it won't be filled? I mean, but it can expire. We have, I didn't hear the question, sorry.
I was asking if there's a meeting between today and our next council meeting?
Next council meeting is June 13th.
And there's no Housing Authority meeting before then?
We need the first Tuesday of March.
So there will be one?
But, Mr. Attorney, please help me here, because I don't see any reason why it's, it couldn't be, the vote on that couldn't be delayed if somebody wants to table it.
Certainly, if there's a member that wants to table it, that's your prerogative. Just understand that it will expire, and I'm just letting you know that.
Okay, but then we would go from there, whenever everybody wants to go through it. Somebody want to make that motion to table the next nomination?
I would make a motion to table that decision to June 13th with the idea that we have the time to reach out to Ms. Polk and talk to her about what she is wanting to do.
I have a motion and a second for the discussion. I'm going to take, well, there is still, yeah, okay, that's you.
Thank you. So my hope then would be, Counsel, if the opportunity is to speak with a member and talk about, you know, whatever may be relative or whatever information that you're seeking. I'll share with you a couple of things that are concerning to me, or as priorities of so on and so on. When we talk about Section 8 vouchers, and when we talk about housing vouchers, how they're applied, what we're using, what we're doing in combination for, how we're using VASH programs, how many vouchers we're using for immediate transition, so for emergency housing, how many, so we don't have a scenario like the Titusville, not Titusville, the Bay Towers, right, where a room full of people who have no place to go. These are all things that I think are open discussion topics. So that would be my hope, just that it goes, because every night, there's three thousand people that are housed by the Housing Authority, right, which is a substantial portion of our community, but as we talk about development and growth, how also do we see the density of affordable housing? How is that going to play into our current zoning and progress as a city so that we don't have, you know, so much in one concentrated area, then the area becomes blight? These are all, these are all concerns that I have. These are all things that, just in my experience, Ms. Taylor is above and beyond very comfortable with. So to be fair, that would be my hope or scope of questions that I personally have.
Member Nelson?
I would agree with Member Behringer. I think Mr. Van Huisen's background and Ms. Taylor's background are going to help them come to grips with those kind of problems. Ms. Polk's background seems to be more in arts, more creative, but not necessarily used to dealing with government regulations. So that's, that's my thought, is that maybe that's something she wants to do. I would say that if we're going to do this, I would ask the city manager to reach out to her, to talk to her about what her desires are.
Individual council members can do that as well, ma'am.
Okay.
I see no more lights. I see no more lights.
I don't want a light.
You got it now.
Yep, yep, yep.
Go ahead.
We talked about reaching out, and I'm, because quite honestly, as I said before, I don't know Mary Polk. But I know if I'm home watching, I don't feel like I'm really feeling really good about things right now. Obviously, we want the best for the boards. I know Ms. Taylor. She'd be great, no question. I just don't like going against someone who's been there and doing this, and I don't know. And normally, if I'm voting against something, I like to have a reason for that. And I feel like if I'm not voting for her at this point, I'm voting against her. So we have now said, we're going to move this forward, and let's reach out to her. I'd like a more specific of what reach out to her means, because we, you know, city manager, maybe, city council people can. Does that mean we all do, or is there some sort of, it would really be nice if we, you know, had her here and could hear her in her own words, tell me what she's thinking about, how important this is to her, or is she looking, as she said in her application, I could do other things too. I like that. I'm not opposed to that, but I hate to do this, sir, with no reason on the table.
To try and answer some of your questions, individual council members can talk to any of the board members. We may not, as a group, talk to them, however, except in, at a meeting, a published meeting. So, you know, the choice will be whether to just put this off to the 13th, so that each of you individually, or maybe each of us individually, can reach out to the person, to that person, Mary Polk, and talk to her. So that's what the vote is at this point. I see lights up. Mr. City Attorney?
As stated by the mayor, you can speak to her. The sunshine doesn't apply. However, it does apply to the extent you cannot have conversations with her and discuss what other council members have spoken to her about.
Correct.
So I would caution you against that. The second thing, I'd also caution you, is I would not approach her and say, the city council believes this, or the position of the city council is X. How do you feel about that? Because you're not authorized to speak for the council unless they voted and authorized you to do that. So certainly, you can speak to her, but I would warn you on those two points. You can certainly invite her back to the next meeting.
Can I do that?
If he says you can do it, we can do it. He's the attorney. Yes, we can do that. First, actually, this is a motion to table, so there shouldn't have been discussion on it. But since we have, at this point, we can vote on that, and then if anybody wants to talk about how to approach it, we can. So I'll call the question here. The motion is to delay action on this until the June 13th meeting. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Now, if somebody else has any comment on this, I guess you can make it. Member Stokel?
Yep. The way I'm viewing this is almost as an interview process. So my recommendation would be that we each kind of reach out to her, and we may find that she's like, oh, I didn't know another applicant was there, I'm interested in other vacancies perhaps. And if she is very gung-ho on, no, this is what I want to do, invite her and invite Ms. Taylor to our next council meeting, and in that way, they can be here to answer questions, and we'll be more confident, I think, in making our decision. That'd be my recommendation.
Okay. Anyone else? I just would repeat the caution that the city attorney gave, that you don't discuss anything anybody else has said, even here. That would be a violation of the sunshine law. So everybody knows that. All right, well, that's the end of the issue at this point. We'll go to the next one. I don't know what the next one is. Oh, here it is. Student Advisory Council resignation, Mr. City Manager.
Yes, sir. Member Michael Scott has submitted his resignation effective 8 May 2017. Staff is requesting that council accept this resignation.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll move to accept his resignation.
I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? Like sign, passes unanimously. Petitions and requests from the public present, non-agenda items. Would anybody like to come up? Anybody who also wants to speak, please come to the front. Sir? Your name and address, please.
Sir, good evening. My name's Joseph Delancey, former city council and vice mayor here. I'd sit where you sit.
And your address, sir. You need your name and address.
I just did. 550 Mendelane. I'm Joseph Delancey. Okay? I've had a bad year this past year, so please bear with me a little. In the beginning of the year, in February, March, a city of Titusville contractor come out and bulldozed my lights in the hopes of putting an underground drainage system in there, and then walked away and left it. And a couple of months later, my wife passed away. Few months after that, I had a hurricane take part of my roof, and just about three weeks ago, I had my roof finally replaced. So I've had a bad year, so bear with me a little bit. What I'm here about is that on or about April the 4th of 2016, employees of the city of Titusville and Jordan Construction proceeded to unearth and traverse the north side of my property adjacent to Melinda Lane for the purpose of installing a new drainage system. My property was told by the city and the contractor, my property would be completely restored to its original state, requiring no effort on my part. There was nothing for me to do. My corner property sits at the southwest intersection of Mendo and Melinda Lane. On or about April the 4th, and many times thereafter, I cautioned and advised all parties involved in the excavation to please do not damage any part of my underground cabling or my six-post pole lights with electrical outlets. I clearly repeated and defined the exact underground location of all direct burial wiring and conduits. Due to the 45-year age of the post lights, any wire damage would require disassembly of the corroded, frozen set screws and manufactured wiring with the progress, within the progress fixtures and corroded pole receptacles. I was assured and reassured by all parties. Their intent was to remove, lift out all fixtures, wiring, undamaged and temporarily set deep into my property. Subsequently, they would restore all undamaged to their original state, and such was not the case. I have the photographs here, and I'd rather go through those with you. They're available here and take up the time to look at them if you wish. But they removed parallel to my undergrounding unscathed by this. Right over here, you can actually see where they actually cut away the path to the lights, cleared. And all they had to do was take a rake or so forth and pull the rest of the, so they could have gently lifted the lights out. Now, these are about a thousand.
Sir, you have 30 seconds. I just have to let you know that.
Pardon me?
You have 30 seconds?
Okay. Well, sir, if I'm wasting your time, I'll excuse myself.
Sir, he.
Sir, would you care?
No, I just.
Please.
I submitted a bill to the city.
Sir, if you would like more time, when your time runs out, we can do that, but there is a procedure, and it is three minutes on the first now. Would you like additional time?
I would like some additional time to go through this.
That's fine.
Unless I'm wasting somebody's time here.
How many minutes would you like, sir? And it has to be reasonable.
At least four or five more minutes, if that's possible.
Four is probably the best we can do for you, because we rarely go over three, so.
Sir, what am I after about here is that I have submitted a bill to the.
Sir, please. I have to get the council to vote on that, sir. Do I hear a motion to give this gentleman four more minutes?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
You have it, sir. Four minutes.
Thank you for your patience. Subsequently, two weeks later, an attempt by three contractor employees, well, first off, let me digress. The lights were pulled out of the ground by bulldozer. Rather than dug out or shoveled out like it was promised, the contracting supervisor said, to heck with, and I use the word heck in the, yeah, I'm right, that he bulldozed the whole thing over because he didn't want to waste the time digging them out. And they laid there, and the problem with those lights, this metal fixtures, they're replaced anymore, you can't get them. There are $600 fixtures, plus the post lights. You can't get the metal. The only you can get now is about the $400 fixture, but it's plastic. They don't last any time at all. That concerned me deeply. The second thing that really concerned me more was that they bulldozed it over and left high-voltage bare wire laying on the ground. Now, my property is at the intersection of a school bus. Schoolchildren cross that yard all the time. And rather than laying there and rot and destroy those, I stood them upright close to my house, which is where kids pass by getting off the school bus. Now, all a kid needs to do is to step on that and touch the pole, because the wiring was pulled out and stretched in the, I have pictures of how it bared it out, and the kid gets electrocuted. And that bothered me, because knowing my attitude with the Today newspaper and my past experience with Today newspapers, I can see the headline, Joe Delancey, former councilman, created impact fees in a city and all this, is a contractor electrocuted kids on his property. I can see the Today paper headlines. That concerned me. So I called the city repeatedly and said, what are you going to do about this? And the city says, well, whatever the contractor does, he's in charge. I tried to call the city manager three times, sir, I tried to call you and left messages. We got to do something about these kids maybe being electrocuted here, okay? I never got a response from you. So and then I talked to the city attorney about it, and I've talked repeatedly to Kevin Cook's people about it. Nothing. My attorney said, give me $5,000, Joe, and he said, I'll go represent you in court. I said, you know, Dan, that's crazy. He said, me too. He says, take the damn thing to claims court. Rather than do that, I thought, at least give this people, this group of people an opportunity, since you work for me and the other Joe Delances in this city, as my employees, maybe you as the supervisor of the city employees can get the city to do something about this. I submitted a bill at the city's request of $1,480, 160 material, which I could have charged a heck of a lot more, but it was $1,480, a lousy $1,480. And I get back, today, I found out for the first time, today, the city says, we'll give you $400. And I said what to the woman, Margaret, or Marie Doci, or something like that. I said, what's the basis of the $400? She had no idea. It's what I figure they pulled out of the air. I said, I gave you a bill for $1,480 that you asked, you, the city, asked me to submit the bill to the contractor. You have a liability here. And they said, no, 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 you take it up with the contractor, and he didn't pay you. Then I was told, well, we're holding back $250,000 of unpaid to the contractor, so we're holding that till you get your paid, your $1,480. Am I right on that? I think you, the city attorney, got the same input from the city administration. So where we stand today is, where do I go to collect the $1,480? Can I get the city to do anything about its administration paying its bills? That's all I'm asking you. Pay the $1,480, and I'll quit bothering you. As simple as that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I have pictures here, if anyone was interested in seeing what damage these people did, you know, and walked away from.
Sir, you can leave them with the county clerk, and we will get a chance to look at them.
The same pictures I gave to the city man, to the city attorney.
Sir, you just asked me if we wanted to look at them. I'm answering.
And to the contractor. They all have the pictures.
And don't give them to the city clerk. That's your choice.
Thank you. Thank you for listening to me.
Not at all.
One more point, if I may, before we go. It did concern me that the metal that they could have damaged, that I reworked and took a lot of pain, pain to rework it, there's the plastic they replace them with today. It lasts about three years. Believe it or not, that with a globe is over $400 apiece for these. $400 apiece for that. It comes with a globe, a PowerStallring globe, believe it. And, you know, and rather than have that, and they only last a couple of years, I decided to repair them. And the city knew I was going to repair them. Thank you for listening to me. That's my story.
Thank you, sir.
Do we go to court, or do I get the $1,480?
You have a question for Mr. Delancey?
Any questions?
You have, somebody's asking a question.
What's the $1,484 exactly?
Was $160 in material, and for over 60 hours of work, I only charged you $40 an hour for 33 hours.
Okay.
Normally, I would have charged you, because I'm a licensed contractor for 72 years. At the age of 12, in Altoona, Pennsylvania.
Sir, sir, please. Sir, you're digressing, and your time is out.
Very good.
Okay, so 160 for material, and then the rest was for labor?
It was 160. I cut everything back. It was more than 160 for the material. It was more than, more than, more than $1,320. But I just said, I cut everything back.
Okay.
Normally, I said $60 for the labor, I just made it $40 because I'm not paying licensing fees and insurance fees anymore.
Okay.
And I've been a licensed contractor. I've been an engineer most of my life at the Space Center. But I grew up in this business from the time I was 12 years' age, and that's why I figure that if anybody's got more experience than me in this industry, I don't know who they'd be. So I think I'm worth $40 an hour. The city offered me $400 this afternoon.
Sir, 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 you're digressing again. You have another person?
I thought I was answering her question. She wasn't.
I think you've answered it, sir.
Thank you.
Somebody else has a question for you. Vice Mayor.
Mayor, thank you, by the way. I appreciate the reminder of that. Thank you. And sir, what would you, what would you be comfortable with for a time for council to research, being that we're hearing this? What would you be comfortable with for an amount of time that you would allow us to look at this, find resolution, or what would be appropriate?
Give me some concurrence that you're interested. Two weeks, you know, the $1,480 doesn't mean a damn to me.
Right.
Okay? The city attorney knows what it's worth.
Then you would be, you would be comfortable.
It's a principle of the thing.
And I understand. So I, and I'm just saying, because I, to be fair, you understand the dynamics of a city council. So just, that's, I'm just trying to understand what you would be comfortable with to allow us respectfully just to take a look at it, research it.
Well, don't come back and offer me $400, as I was after, offered this afternoon by the city staff, and I said, what was the basis? They had no idea. They pulled a figure out of the air and said, $400.
Okay.
They don't even know what it was for, but maybe, that's a number.
And I just say, I'm definitely comfortable taking a look, researching, and following. Thank you.
I think it's very fair.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your time.
Next item, consent agenda, city manager?
I believe you have another petition?
Oh, I'm sorry. It's been so long.
That's okay. Good evening. My name is Abby Johnson. I'm with the St. John's River Water Management District. I'm your new intergovernmental coordinator. I just came this evening to introduce myself and leave my business cards with the clerk and to offer any assistance we can provide to you. I apologize, I've been on the job a little, maybe right at 60 days, but I'm covering three counties. So, yeah, my hands are a little full, but I am excited to be here. Please use me to be your connection to the leadership of the district, and however we can be of assistance to you for, to advance projects that are consistent with our core mission, we're very excited to do so. And thank you for being a model to your local residents, as we do have a water shortage ordinance warning out there. We're very thankful for the rain today, but just kind of keep pushing that message of water conservation. Very excited to be here. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Thank you for coming. And did you give your contact information to the city clerk, please?
Certainly.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming in. Okay, anyone else? Yes, sir.
CJ Arnold, Harrison Street, Titusville, resident since 1957, when this was Bayview. I watched with a great deal of interest and anxiety with, two weeks ago, when we were wrestling with one of the worst subjects there is, health insurance and the cost. I worked with a group called Speak Out Brevard and the Brevard Progressive Alliance. We're trying to get people active and interested in changing systems and voting and talking to their representatives about suggestions we have. I'm sure all of you would raise your hands if you would like to get completely out of the health insurance business as a city, as would every resident in Brevard County. We have a solution. You have it. The discussion with the insurance representative said, well, we can give you cheaper plans. Well, of course, it doesn't cover what we need. More copays, more cost shifting. To benefit who? Few insurance companies, Big Pharma, and no one else. I think it's time to seriously consider, and I'm asking the cities to study this and send a resolution to our elected representatives endorsing House Bill 676. It has one-third of the House of Representatives behind it. They're saying, this is a solution whose time has come. We cannot take the price gouging, the fine print, the changes almost weekly, what you can expect. It's time to get out of the stranglehold that the insurance companies have us in. There's no reason for them to be in the middle between us and our doctors and our pharmacists. No reason whatsoever. The VA is a single payer program. So is the DOD. So is Medicare. It works. It's fine. If it's funded by Congress, but some of them want to shift all of this to the private insurance industry and the benefit of a very, very few. Speak Out Brevard and the Brevard Progressive Alliance want to get the word out, to get to your representatives and tell them it's time for HR 676. Single payer, universal healthcare for everyone. You'll be out of the business, so will we. We don't want copays. We don't want deductibles. We don't want fine print. There's no reason for it whatsoever. How to fund it? Well, I did a little bit of math. 330 million Americans paying $100 a month. That's 330, no, that's 33 billion, okay? Times a year, 400 billion. This is fundable easily, $100 a month. Simple math. Do we want to shift some money from other programs? There's a program called the Program That Ate the Pentagon. I work in those areas. They call it the Program That Ate the Pentagon. It's one aircraft program. $1 trillion for the lifecycle cost of this aircraft, the F-35. What, $1 trillion? It's a matter of fact. If you listen to C-Span, I work from home a lot, I listen to it all the time. A general CENTCOM commander testifying in front of the House Armed Services Committee. We spent $500 million to train freedom fighters in Syria. Senator asked him, how many people did we train? This is a matter of fact, you can look at it in C-Span. He whispered, five. Five people were trained for $500 million. Where are our priorities? What about us, the people that built this country, all of us? So I'm asking you to see if the city will put a resolution together and send it to Congressman Posey and our representatives, our senators in particular, and tell them the time has come.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next items. Oh, sorry.
Sorry.
There's more there.
One more. So my name is Chris McGraw. I'm a retiree of the City of Titusville. And I had spoken last council meeting about the retiree health insurance. And I brought the sheet that I'm going to refer to, to refresh your memory. So I had spoken about the $500 cap. And I was grateful that council passed lifting the cap for Tier 1 and 2. But Tier 3 was not included in the motion. And I happen to be in Tier 3, so I wanted to come and talk to you about it. And I wanted to tell you again that I retired in June of 2016 and my premium was $153 a month. And in 2018, which is two years later, it's, if it, nothing changes, it goes to 303 a month, which is a 98% increase, which is quite drastic to me as an individual who has a limited income. So what I'm asking is, if council were to lift the $500 cap, I'm good with the 50%. That, that seems fair to me. It's a cost share between me as a retiree and the city. And so that would bring my premium to 273. And so even though it doesn't seem like a lot of money individually, it is to me because I'm on a fixed income. So what does it cost the city, the $53? There's 20 people who are non-Medicare in this tier. It's right there on your sheet. So it's 53 times 12, times 20 is $12,000. So what I'm asking is you to consider funding that, lifting that cap. Let it be the 50% pay or the $8 per year of service. And what do I bring to the table, me and the 20 other people? We'll bring $66,000 to offset the cost of the premium. That's our 273 times 12 and times 20. So that's kind of substantial from 20 people to help offset the cost of a premium. So who are we? So those 20 people are made up of six people who have 30-plus years of service. Then there are nine people who have 20 to 29 years of service. And then there are five people who have 15 to 20 years of service. So we're, we're long-term employees who dedicated ourselves to the city. And so, again, I'm just asking to be considered this Tier 3, to lift this cap. Let us pay our 50% and, and I'd be thankful.
Any questions from council? Vice Mayor?
Thank you. So, number one, thank you for coming and speaking.
Oh, you're welcome.
And the only reason I smiled when, when you started was because I was wondering how long it was gonna take before somebody came up. And I mean that respectfully.
Well, you know, there was a lot of discussion.
Yeah.
And I went, wait a minute. Am I in this group? And then when I saw the summary of action, I realized, oh, no, I'm not in the group. So I thought, I guess.
I guess in, for some rationale, and I'm up in discussion with council, but some rationale that went into that decision for myself was not, one, was it attainable through council shift in, change in policy, even getting what we did? And one was, could we meet in the middle on that? And I feel pretty good about that. The other part was in what is going to be, because that is a substantial change for costs in the city, how much time will we need to measure that cost, to understand the impact, so on and so on? That was my rationale for having a cut line. But you bring a good point. We're, we're talking 20 people, we're talking 12,000. And if we're into it for, if we're into it for finding a half a million in, in the upcoming year, if it's a half a million and 12,000, I think that we're probably gonna have to look at the approach as a big picture approach. And I don't believe, just in that sense, but I would, I would, you know, I welcome city managers' input on it and just some time to look at it. But I don't think that the 12,000, to your point, if it's that, is going to be so substantial in contrast to what we've already done. So whether it's 500, the half a million, or half a million and 12,000, I think that we're probably gonna have to stake some of the same policy changes. So that was my forethought of why I said there. I wasn't sure how much, I wasn't totally confident in if we said everybody. I went there, but I don't know if there's support for that. So that's the rationale.
Okay.
Chris, I, I'm not comfortable with making a decision tonight without speaking to staff because, as you well know, some of these things by themselves may not be a big deal, but you're setting a precedent for the future. And we've just got to look at it. And I would, I would think everybody up here would like to spend some time with the city attorney and the city manager to look at this thing carefully before we make a move that I'm not prepared for tonight, so.
I'm sure I realize that you probably wouldn't make a motion, but I just wanted to bring it to your attention so that you would consider it. And then, the same for me, you know, as an individual, a premium that raises 98% in two years to today, what's it gonna be in two years from now? And how does that price me out of health insurance? So that's why I felt I needed your time.
I understand. It's gotta start somewhere, Chris. I understand. Okay, that's fine.
I appreciate your time.
You have another question from Member Nelson?
Actually, it's for the city manager. How many insurance quotes do we get each year? I mean, does?
We have a broker that does that, ma'am. So they narrow it down to, to award the contract. We are actually gonna go out to bid for our, our new insurance here shortly.
Okay. Would it be worthwhile to talk to more than one broker and get bids from more than one broker?
We hire a broker to get the bids, ma'am.
Okay, okay. Because that's something that just seems, it seems like it's going up very fast.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And I'm living it, and so are others. But I appreciate your time and your consideration greatly.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming up, Chris.
You're welcome.
Anybody else want to speak? I don't see anyone. All right, consent agenda. Clerk, are there any cards on this item?
No, sir.
Council, are there any items on this list that you wish to pull? I see none. Could I ask for a motion on all of the items A through?
A through what? F.
F? A through F? Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion on the consent agenda items A through F.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
I assume that's a motion to pass?
Yes, that should have been approved.
That's okay. All right. Does council have, have any, wait, I'm on the wrong one here. Okay.
Yes, sir. I'll go ahead and read the.
City manager, would you read the items, please?
Yes, sir. Read the items for the record. Consent agenda item 8A, approve one master lease agreement, financing addendum, financing of 2220, correction, new police vehicles to replace 20 vehicles being deadlined from the police fleet. 10 police radios to upgrade old radios, one fire truck to replace an aging fire truck, which will be used as a reserve truck, and one Chevy Tahoe for use due to increased fire administration staff. Six public work vehicles replacing aged fleet vehicles. Also approve related resolution number 8-2017. Consent agenda item 8B, approve the ranking of firms and authorize staff to proceed with contract negotiations with CDM Smith Incorporated of Maitland, Florida, ranked number one firm, to provide engineering and consulting services for the design and construction of upgrades to the Osprey water reclamation facility for improved nutrient removal. And if no agreement is reached, terminate negotiations with the number one ranked and enter negotiations with the number two ranked firm and so on. In addition, subject to the resolution and terms by the city attorney and city manager, approve the interim local agreement with Brevard County that provides the necessary funds for this project from the Save Our Lagoon Project Plan 2016 SOLP and authorize the mayor to execute. Consent agenda item 8C, approve the award of an emergency contract to Chrome Engineering and Construction Services of Gainesville, Florida in the amount of $246,600 to perform emergency repairs to 1.0 million gallon drinking storage tank located at the Mourning Dove Water Treatment Plant and authorize the mayor to execute the contract subject to resolution of the contract terms by the city attorney and city manager. Consent agenda item 8D, approve the use of Florida Sheriff's Association contract for the purchase of four administrative interceptor vehicles from Deval Ford Fleet's sales in the amount of $143,312 and two 2017 Chevrolet Tahoe from Stingwick Stage Chevrolet for K-9 unit in the amount of $108,638. Consent agenda item 8E, approve the award of contracts to Preferred Materials Incorporated Asphalt Division of Kissimmee, Florida and P&amp;S Painting of Daytona Beach, Florida in the amounts of $140,179.32 and $34,684.69 respectively for the construction and paving improvements on various paved and dirt streets within the CDGBG South Street Target area and authorize the mayor to execute said contract. Consent agenda item 8F, approve the sole source purchase of mud de-watering wash rack system for the city garage from EST Companies of Tempe, Arizona in the amount of $165,997.95 subject to the resolution terms by the city attorney and city manager.
All right, thank you. I have a motion and a second. I'll call the question. All those in favor say yes. A roll call?
There is a resolution.
Oh, sorry. City clerk, would you call a roll call, please?
Member Diesel?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Behringer?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Go to the next item as ordinances. City attorney, will you read item A?
Ordinance number 15, 2017, an ordinance of the City of Titusville, Florida, amending Chapter 28 zoning of the Code of Ordinances and Land Development Regulations, specifically amending Article 4 Use Table and Section 2872 Assisted Living Facility to permit assisted living facilities within the Shoreline Mixed Use District and to amend conditions related to development of assisted living facilities within specified zoning districts, providing for separability, repeal of conflicting ordinances for an effective date and incorporation into the code.
All right, this is a first reading. I will open the public hearing.
Sir, I'll go ahead and introduce the item.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended denial of this action 5-1. Based on a citizen's request on 14th February, 2017, council approved a visability to include assisted living facilities, ALFs, as a use in the Shoreline Mixed Use SMU zoning district. The purpose of this ordinance amends the zoning use table to include ALFs as a limited use within the SMU based upon the criteria currently in place in the R2-R3 HM DMU zoning districts, where the property is less than 1.5 acres and located on a collector or arterial road. Where conditions are not met, an ALF may be considered a conditional use. And staff is available to answer any questions that you may have, sir.
Okay, I will open the public hearing. Are there any, any cards on this item?
No, sir.
Council, you have any questions to the city manager? Member Nelson?
I do have a question for Ms. Basaka.
Oh, that's fine.
Planning and zoning recommended denial? Do we know the reasons why?
There were several. The vice chair stated in his motion for denial that an ALF is not appropriate in the SMU zoning district, that it is incompatible with the business corridor of US-1, and that the potential large number of elderly with special assistance needs could be an evacuation issue.
That's true. Okay, that makes sense.
Vice Mayor?
I guess, happy to watch the meeting. I think your summary works pretty good, but did anybody mention Titusville Towers? And the reason I say that is because Titusville Towers, right behind us, is a large facility with elderly folks, both independent and I would say those functioning with limited activities of daily living. It's on the river and it is in what I consider a business district. So, to my knowledge, I haven't seen anybody fall on the river and I haven't seen anybody get hit by a car or anything like that. So, did anybody make mention of that?
Not that I'm aware of, sir.
All right, okay.
Member Diesel?
They had concerns about evacuation issues. That was just kind of a mention, or did they have some sort of background? Did they talk to the fire department or anything along those lines?
They didn't mention that. I think that the person who brought this up was originally concerned because he lives close to an area where there are a lot of ambulances that come by, and he said that he thought that was disruptive. And so I think the longer they thought about it, the more reasons they had for this to be a concern.
And I, while this was being read, I was thinking along the lines of Vice Mayor, you know, we have Titusville Towers there and I haven't heard too many issues in that area. And I can also say, as I mentioned previously, in my own life, my mom was in a care situation at the Royal Oaks facility. And surely there's concerns about people being where they're not supposed to be, perhaps getting out the front door. That's with any situation, but rare, rare, rare. So I have some concerns about the 5-1 vote.
Okay, anybody, any other comments? I don't see any lights. There is no vote on this. Close the public hearing and we'll go on to. Uh, close the public hearing and we'll go on to the next item. City manager, I'm sorry, city attorney.
Ordinance number 16, 2017, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, extending the temporary moratorium on the establishment or operation of any medical marijuana treatment centers, medical marijuana dispensaries, or medical marijuana facilities within the city of Titusville imposed ordinance 1, 2017, and providing for an effective date.
Planning and zoning commission recommended approval of this action 5-1. In November 2016, Florida voters approved constatational amendment number two, allowing medical marijuana use within the state. On 10 January 2017, council adopted ordinance number 1-2017 to establish a temporary moratorium on the establishment and operation of medical marijuana facilities to provide sufficient time to develop regulations. The moratorium will expire on July 9th, 2017. In order to provide adequate time to review legislative action related to amendment two, which has not been adopted as of this writing, and to finalize the proposed ordinance relating to medical marijuana, staff is proposing a moratorium be extended for additional 180 days. Should the ordinance be ready before that extension, the moratorium can be removed before the sunset date.
Clerk, are there any cards on this item?
We have one card. It's Kathy Marinelli.
All right, I'll open the public hearing. Ma'am?
Good evening, counsel. My name is Kathleen Marinelli. I reside here in Titusville on Rolling Hill Drive. I wanted to speak tonight. I indicated negative. I, I am against extending the moratorium. I feel that sufficient time has been given for research to be done, and currently for people that are eligible and need, and I say that, need, this drug. The closest place to Titusville, there is one, Edgewater, Lake Mary, in Orlando are the closest. Now, there is not one in Brevard County. I don't know why, but there are none. There are people and patients with varying, it's not just about pain management. Every day, research is finding that medical marijuana helps various conditions, and why are we continually letting people suffer? Personally, and this is just my opinion, I feel this is just a stalling tactic. People are afraid of this drug and really don't want it to come to this town. They have all, they think it's, it's recreational. This is not about recreational. This is not about people getting high. This is about helping people with illnesses and relieving suffering and pain. And I don't understand, if anyone can give me a reason why nothing can be done at this time. I would love to see Titusville instead of waiting and being a follower, to be with our medical, our wonderful medical facilities here. We are a perfect location to bring about, bring something to Brevard County. Let's be the leader instead of the follower. We want to be respected here. Let's, this be one of the ways we can be leaders in this county. If anyone has any questions.
Any questions?
That's my opinion.
I'm not necessarily for Kathy. Oh. Sorry about the back microphone.
It's not for you, ma'am, so I guess you can sit down unless somebody else has a question.
Uh, Richard, Mr. Brier. Do we have an idea of what specifically, what laws we need to change, what ordinances we need to change, and how long that would take? We need zoning? We need?
Yes, we're looking at zoning as far as the areas you'll want them in, distance restrictions, things of that nature. So you'll do one ordinance when you do create it. Within that ordinance, you'll have to modify a lot of your zoning categories and maybe even your permitting process to address where it will be permitted or conditional use based on council's desire.
And if you can get that to us faster, you will bring it, bring it to us.
Yes, staff, we have a, a good working draft, and Peggy, Ms. Bisaka can certainly speak to a lot of that. We know that the county currently is looking at a draft that they've recently modified. We understand they're proposing to make their regulations apply throughout the county, including within the cities, unless we opt out.
Okay.
So, we, and they, so we're also looking at what they're doing.
Okay.
Uh, we expected the legislature to come through with some regulations and some assistance, and that didn't happen. So, yes, we are, we've had very many meetings on this, we've looked at this. I suspect staff will probably at some point come to you and say, this is what we're looking at, and get some feedback as we're drafting this.
Okay.
With regard to zoning, distance restrictions, uh, tell you what the other communities are doing. We hope to tell you maybe what the county's thinking. But like I said, they went back to the drawing board, so.
Okay.
That's, now I'll let Ms. Bisaka provide any additional information she has.
So soon. I'm assuming, I'm assuming that we will have something in the next couple of months.
Oh, oh, absolute, well, that is certainly our intent. We were hoping, as Mr. Broom said, that the legislature would give us some sense of what, if we were going to be precluded from doing any locational criteria, whatever, and that has not happened because the legislature did not move forward. So now, if they do not do something by July 1st, then the Department of Health will have to do something.
Okay.
And at this time, we, we would like to be consistent with those regulations so we don't have to come back and make changes. So we're waiting for that while we're also looking what other communities are doing.
Understandable. I know Orlando already has a, a dispensary, and part of it scares me, and then part of it, they were having a conversation, television show the other night, talking about how they're using cannabis to keep people off the opioids, which are so addictive. So, I feel like it's here. I mean, whether we like it or not, and hopefully it's going to be a great thing.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, sir. Pin that a little further. Souped nuts. Council says, write it, whatever we're doing, we're going to do. And theoretically, we walked out today and we said, it is our policy that we are going to create everything we need to do to allow this to take place within the city. Souped to nuts. How much time will it take from the time we say, let's go, to the time a business can walk in and say, I want to apply for that permit, or whatever it might be?
Well, advertising requirements, first of all, this is, this is three here, three public discussions. There are two before council and one before the planning and zoning. So let's not talk about June, because there's only one meeting in June. So typically, that takes about six weeks before the, between advertising and the third hearing, which is the second public hearing at council. So if you were to say today, Peggy, I want you to take whatever draft you've got and put it into an agenda item, then if you, we could probably hear it the first meeting in July.
Which then puts this first meeting, but we're going.
You have to have two.
Two more.
And then we have to have, and then we typically, as we did this evening, you hear the planning and zoning commission's comments before you get into the public hearing process. That's why it's about six weeks and then you've got your advertising deadline.
So if everything went smooth, we're probably September.
Oh, I think we could do a little better than that.
Okay, I'm about, I'm building in some.
Yeah, I mean, I, yeah.
You know, like I'm.
But because we do have a, we do have a draft.
Right.
Of this. And if, um, we, we have a lot of locational criteria, we've got some maps that we can show you, that you would have a sense of where these were possibly put, and then we could probably, I, I think we could probably have it done comfortably the first week of August if council was ready to tell us to move.
Okay. And, sir, I have a discussion with council, but I had a hurry time.
No, that's fine. I don't, I, I will be very uncomfortable to proceed without the state giving us some information on what direction they're going, because we could just get down the line, pass something, and then have to redo it. I don't think it's, it's prudent. They haven't made a decision yet. How can we make a decision without knowing where they're headed? So, I, I support, after they do that, yeah, let's get it, whatever it is, done as soon as possible. Um, I wish we didn't have to, but it was the voters, majority of voters who, who wanted it. I would invite everyone, I watched the, the county commission meeting today, I, on this subject. You might want to watch that, it was very interesting.
Okay.
Uh, if you have a chance, and it's, they do replays, obviously. I think you'll find the whole conversation and the people who were involved very interesting. Um, all right, any, any, oh, we got numbers, uh, Mr., uh, member Diesel?
I actually, my button was pushed to simply say what you had said, and I was going to ask, you know, we're waiting for the state to come down, and we're waiting to hear from the state. So I'm a little concerned when, when we are saying, I'm waiting to hear from the state, but yet we can be moving forward August, September, and I appreciate your, your efforts to, to make that happen. But I, you know, by coincidence, I was just watching on the news today that, you know, there are some people in the legislature who are calling for, if they don't get this settled quickly, call some kind of special session to get this marijuana ordinance moving forward, or our law moving forward. So I'm concerned as well that we move and the state is still up there, you know, getting on TV cameras, you know, throwing their stuff out. There's no question, I believe it was a 71% approval by the state of Florida. So I, I get that, and I totally understand that. But I am concerned in moving out of step with the state not giving us the guidance first.
Okay, um, thank you. Vice Mayor?
And thank you, sir. And, and to the, to your comments for both to the mayor and, and member Diesel, I'm in agreement, I'm in agreement in the idea that there's a redundancy that inherently we build in if, if we spend four or five weeks on it, we move it forward, state comes out with something totally different, and then anything that we have, uh, anything that has been given authority to operate within the city would be complicit to the state's, would have to be complicit to the state's requirements. But I, it's six weeks of work that inherently you, you could consider down the tubes in order to readjust and so on and so on. I guess where I'm, and I am in agreement, I think that they're going to have a special session out of it, but I, it is a political football. Uh, it's how I see it. It, it's a political football. And if it wasn't a constitutional amendment, I would be, I think, more willing to say, because I, until, until day, two days ago, I was real comfortable, you know, just do another six month moratorium, let him get it right, let him get it settled. And then I kept remembering, uh, folks I served in hospice, right? And this week, last week, out at 95, we had signs pop up in our city that said, need weed, call, right? And so that did not help the cause of legitimizing an appropriate use of a medical, right? So I, I, I am cautious with going too, too far, too fast without thought and time for staff. But I, you know, I, I think that no matter where you are in the state of Florida, if after a year of approving a constitutional amendment, you as a citizen can't do what you voted in the constitution, inherently that is just wrong in principle. So that, and that's why I'm asking for a timeline. So it's arbitrary, it is totally, you know, created by my own self, but that, that's where I'm going, is that whatever the case may be, come November 7, or one year from the date residents said, we, we want it, I think that that option needs to be available. And if the state of Florida wants to get down to business and do what they're supposed to do, and legislate and do their job, right, and do that, then they can do it. But in absence of that leadership, sometimes carrying a football, you don't want to, but that's what you're there for. Um, you know, I, I, I think that it would be appropriate that as a parameter we set on ourselves, or a, a timeline is going, if we're past a year, then I, I would take ownership in not getting it done.
Uh, member Nelson?
Uh, Mayor, Ms. Marinelli asked if she could make one additional comment?
So, the council.
Yes.
Come up, ma'am.
And again, I appreciate that you want to do it right. But have we talked to some of the other cities that have managed? They've gone ahead and done it. I mean, you've got Orlando, as I said, Edgewater, and these are ones that I, you can go and Google it. Vero Beach is the closest going south. 71%, as you stated, Dan, 71% of the voters in Florida, and this was the second time that it was brought up, that we voted for this to go through. I think we, as you were saying, Matt, is the people that have spoken, and they're not being listened to. If our legislature in Tallahassee can't get their act together, honestly, it's because they're trying to find a way of not doing it. And delaying it is, it's a delay thing. And I don't want to see us do it here. I would like to see it. My husband has to take opioids because of various conditions he has. He would much rather be on, have the option to, to look that after all the years. He tries not to take them because he doesn't want to, but it's necessary for his health, for his pain level. So, you know, you're, you're, you're taking it out of people's hands. And I understand that the federal government is another whole ball of wax. I understand that. But we are Titusville, and the people care about each other, we have the medical facilities to, and the doctors that are willing, and we can make something happen for people that need it. And that's all I'm trying to say. So, listen to the people, the majority has spoken more than once.
Thank you, ma'am. We are somewhat down the road on this because we went through this last year, or the last time it was voted on, and actually, uh, I won't say we expected it to pass, but we were going to be prepared if it did pass. So we do have a lot of information, but I still can't feel any differently than I do. I, I think we can't prematurely do this and then make huge mistakes because it doesn't go coincide with the state. And I appreciate your position, sympathize with it, but we have to take a, not an individual perspective, but a perspective of, of everybody that's involved in this thing and, and the people in, that are the citizens, are citizens. So, uh, I think we've kind of, unless I hear differently from someone, I think, uh, what I would like is just to, let's wait and see what the state does and be prepared to do as much as you can before that, and be prepared to go as quick as we can once the decision is made. Yeah, question for staff. Yeah, sure.
And, and Ms. Bisaka, uh, so the timeline for the state, inherently, I, I, my faith in the legislature is less, so I hope that they do, but in absence of that, it defaults to the Department of Health. Is there any guidance or timeline? So the Department of Health is, moles it over, they spit something out, whatever that might be. Do you have any idea, number one, of how long that process may take? Step one. Step two, once they define their process, how long would it take from us to review, adopt, change, and then come back up? So at, at the end of it, if it, if it defaults to the 1st of July, then what are we looking at as a city? Best case scenario?
The staff has what I think is a good skeleton ordinance, and the question is, what are the specifics in there? The, to give you an example, there were six, one, two, three, four, five, six, uh, Senate and House bills, and they went everywhere from local ordinance can specify location number and permitting details to telling us how many there were per residence, and telling us that they have to have 500 foot setback, one of them said 1,000 feet setback. So they, they were all over the place. And we have some conditions, as I said, laid out in what we think could be a straw man for the council to consider. So, once we see the direction that the state is going, it would really not take us very long to get that advertised, because we, we want to advertise it as broadly as possible so council.
so council can consider and make changes as they need to. So, as I said, it takes about two weeks to get an ad into the paper, and then depending on how the meetings are scheduled, we could be holding meetings within three or four weeks after the actual ad is sent to the paper. It's a 10-day advertising requirement, so that's about two weeks.
Sir, I think maybe one of the, one of the aspects is, maybe a different way of looking at it, might be that inherently tell it, our legislative, our colleagues in, in the legislature don't, are mixed in their review, I would be comfortable in looking at the skeleton that we have, not moving forward to adopt it, but reviewing it with the idea that there, that may be the answer that they need. So, take our skeleton to them and say, "Here's what we want," state legislature, and maybe help them a little bit.
You can review any bit of information that we have in the city on anything.
And that's, that's I think I, from, for what I might try to do.
But, I would also caution you that we still don't know what the state's going to do until they finally do it, because they are a group, a large group of people who will have different opinions on this. So, the only thing that would, to me, without having the plan that the state has, we are putting ourselves in, in some jeopardy of being premature with it. So, but you are welcome certainly to look at any material if you'd like, sir. I see one more light, Member Nelson.
Thank you. Member Behringer, I'm just going to point out, if they come up with a decision, the, our representatives come up with a decision by July 1, and we were to extend this out 90 days, that gives us till September 13. And I think that's probably a doable timeframe.
Based on the, based on something coming out by July, I would just tell you that this ad costs about $1,600.
Ooh.
Which is why we're very careful when we advertise things. So, if you wanted to think about the financial impact of that, that's why we say, put it in for X number of days and you can make it shorter. Because if you do it for 90 days and you needed it for 91 days, that will cost you $1,600.
So, actually, what we could do is do it for 180 days, and maybe ask city manager to bring it back up, or have you bring it back up in 90 days?
Yes, ma'am, we're not going to wait. When we're ready to come back before council, we just built the 180 days in as, as a cushion. But, when we're ready to present, we'll, we'll have it before council.
That works. Does that work?
I, I think that's a very good suggestion. Would somebody like to make that motion?
Do we need it?
Sure, we don't need a motion.
You don't need a motion? Okay, that's fine. I'll close the public hearing, unless there's somebody else that'd like to say anything. I don't see any lights, close the public hearing, and go on to the next issue, which is 12A, City Manager.
Historic Preservation Board has been discussing ways to encourage owners of historic buildings and properties in the city to participate in local historic designation process. One incentives, one incentive that cities and counties in the state have adopted to encourage renovation and preservation of historic buildings and properties is the creation of a historic local property ad valorem tax program. The local property tax exemption program for historic properties is authorized by Section 196.1997 Florida statute. Such programs should allow for property tax exemption up to 100% of the assessed value of all improvements to historic property, which is, result in restoration, renovation, rehabilitation of such properties. The exemption applies only to improvements of real property. In order for the property to qualify for the exemption, any such improvements must be made on or after the day the ordinance authorizing ad valorem tax exemption for historic properties is adopted. Qualified properties may be residential, commercial, and must either be listed on the National Registry of Historic Places as a contributing building, in the National Register of District, or designated as a historic under local preservation ordinances. Rehabilitation work must be in accordance with the Secretary of Interior standards for rehabilitating historic buildings. Exemptions may, may remain for up to 10 years, and applications only to that portion, correction, applies only to that portion of the property tax levied by the local governing granting the exemption. Historic Preservation Board unanimously voted at their 1 May 2017 meeting to request the city council to consider a historic preservation local property tax ad valorem exemption ordinance to be drafted by the city attorney's office. And what the staff's recommending is that council provide advisability to staff regarding whether or not to develop an ordinance creating historic preservation local property tax, ad valorem tax exemption program.
Clerk, are any cards on this item?
No, sir.
Discussion from council?
Yes.
No, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Yes.
Ms. Socka, can you tell us what kind of financial impact it would have?
Well, I-
Do we have?
I can tell you how many structures, at this moment, could potentially be involved.
Okay.
There are five structures that are on the National Register. Two of those do not pay taxes, because one's a church, and one is, that's St. Gabriel's, and the Pritchard House.
Okay.
So, that's three structures. There are 23 total structures in the downtown that are considered contributing buildings for the National Register, and there are seven homes and other, I think there's one non-home, but there are seven structures that have been designated on the local. So, we are talking a total of 33 structures within the city, and it would be whatever improvements they made, which is why I can't estimate, because I don't know whether that improvement would be $10,000 or $100,000.
I would like to see, I'd give them some type of credit. 100% for 10 years seems a little high, in my mind. I don't know that's-
If I may make a comment?
Sure or not?
It's only on the improvements, however.
Correct.
It's not on, it's not on their whole property, it just has to do with the improvements they, they put on it, that meet the standards of restoration. So, just want to make sure everybody understands that. Continue, please.
I'm sorry, understood that, but I, I see somebody who has a piece of property, then approves it, $200,000, and we're out that total revenue for the next 10 years. So, I'd like to be fair to us, but also be fair to them. And I'm not quite sure how to do that. And I'm hoping you have, have an idea.
Well, I, I think what we could do is go back to the Historic Preservation Board and say, if this was council's direction, that 100,000, I mean, 100% may be something that you're not comfortable with, so let's ask them for some alternatives. What they're trying to do is to encourage more of these homes to be put on the register, and to be upgraded appropriately. As I said, you have to meet criteria, you can't just decide that you're going to put a 1970s improvement on a 1920s house, kind of thing.
Understood. I, I could live with that.
Member Diesel?
I like the idea, I like the encouragement, I like the, the break that they're going to get on the improvements, but I would also like to see the numbers of what it's going to do to our, you know, the, the revenue that we would be getting. However, again, I think Mayor made it clear that that's just on the improvements, not the property. So, I like what I'm reading, but again, before I could go further, I'd have to see some numbers to say, you know, we, we lost that much revenue.
Thank you. Member Socka?
Yep, I just wanted to clarify, you said there's five that are currently registered, and the others you're trying to get registered?
There are five that are currently registered on the National Register of Historic Places, and seven that are locally.
Okay.
And then there are 23 that are called contributing buildings to the National Register of District, and those are located in the downtown.
Okay. Would it be possible to get the list of everyone?
Sure.
Okay.
We also have a map, but we'd be happy to do that.
A map would be fine, too, just to look at it, because if this, if this is perhaps a deciding factor for some of them, I think it's important that we still recognize our history and show, just treat them accordingly.
Member Nelson?
Sorry, Ms. Socka, contributing means what?
It means that the individual structure may not be identified as an individual, but that, taken as a whole, the entirety of this group contributes to the historic character of the area.
I think I'm following.
So, in, so, there may be, for instance, I think that the Pritchard House, we can say, is renovated both interior and exterior, and has some historic, because of the people who had lived there, where these buildings may not quite rise to that level, but taken as a group, they set a historic tone-
Okay.
-that then contributes to the fact that this district is historic.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Anyone else? I, I think what I'm hearing is council wants you to come back with more information, have you got that idea there? So, does council agree with that? We don't need a vote, I guess, you have your direction, so, thank you very much. Next item is the 2018 expenditure of city funds by North Brevard Economic Development Zone.
The inter-local agreement between the city of Titusville and North Brevard Economic Development Zone requires that city review and approve the district's budget concerning expenditures of city funds. FY 2018 annual operating budget for the NDBZ is attached. North Brevard Economic Development Zone budget was approved by the North Brevard Economic Development Zone Board on 12 May 17, and we believe we have Mr. Troy Post here to answer any of your questions, and your action is to review and approve.
Good evening, Mr. Post. How are you, sir?
Oh, fine, thank you.
Good. Does anybody have questions at this point? Do you, I don't see any questions, but do you have some statement you'd like to give us?
Just my comments, yes, I'm Troy Post with the, the Economic Development Zone. This is currently year six of the zone's existence, we have a 31-year lifespan, so next year will be our seventh year. We are anticipating an overall revenue stream of about $3 million, of which approximately $75,000 will be the city share coming in. I do have to tell you, though, this is based only on some preliminary projections on what we think the revenue stream is going to be. Unlike a typical city department or agency, which develops what its budget of expense items is, and then asks you for the allocation, we do it a little bit reverse, we get the allocation that's set by the appreciation of property values. So, we will not know that until July, when the tax assessor officially releases that. So, there is a possibility that the figure we get from the city's increment will actually be larger than $75,000. We do not think that it'll be below $75,000. What I would ask tonight is that, if it turns out to be a number that's much larger than what we have guessed, if it's a $30,000, $40,000 additional amount, we'll probably put that money in the reserve allocation for the zone, and then when we actually have those true values set and start our fiscal year, we can come back to the council and ask for what would be a budget change request, to go through our finance department with the county, and get your input on how to allocate that additional, those additional dollars that come in.
I don't see any questions. I guess council is saying, go forth and do good things.
Okay. All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Oh, we need a motion to, to approve, or a motion to approve the expenditure as given?
I'd move to approve the financial year 2017-18 annual expenditure of the city funds for the, by the North Brevard Economic Development Zone.
I have a motion in a second, and I'll just comment that your, your comments about if it's greater than that, coming back, we understand that's what we'd like to do, how you understand that's what we'd like you to do. All right. Any further discussion? Not hearing any? All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? Same sign, passes unanimously. Next item, Mr. City Manager.
On 8 December 2015, council passed a resolution which established guidelines for determining if an event constitutes a public purpose for allowing the expenditure of public funds. Since FY 2014, citywide requests for special event funding has increased over 99%. We currently have received 15 requests totaling $123,862 for FY 18. Council previously approved requests from nonprofit organizations to cover costs associated with public safety, such as fire, police staffing, and road closures for the events that promote the community involvement and economic growth. These approved events have been determined to constitute a public purpose for the purpose of expending public funds. Funding for the, these events are sourced from the city's general fund account. Staff is recommending for the FY 2018 funding to be limited to $80,000. Proposed funding allocation at this level is requested on the attached table. We will be submitting to council, for your consideration, the, the event's approval during the FY 2018 budget workshops. And what we're asking is council to provide guidance on funding levels for the 2018 special events request, and this is a, a dollar amount that we'll plug into the, the budget to come up with a proposed budget to bring before council.
Counsel, any questions? Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I'm, so, inherently, every year, the, the dollar amount for special events has gone up, but it, the nice part of that is because there's active engagement in our community, and that has built year over year over year. And the threshold of, you know, 123,000, that is a lot of money, but it's specific to city services. So, in, in the past, my, I, my argument has been, I believe, to be consistent in that, if there's someplace in the city that requires more safety and more officers, we're, as a city, that's what we do, and good things are happening in the city, without the, without each organization having to take on the cost of the additional services. And then, and that's why I've been very supportive of the city spending money on things that bring the community together. Our challenge, I think, though, now, even more so, is that in the next voting cycle, the ad valorem's going to be on there, and I, I have a feeling that when you tell somebody that they can pay less taxes if they vote for it, that that is going to pass overwhelmingly. Being said, what I foresee on the horizon is that the ad valorem that we use, we are going to take a huge hit on, this just after making a commitment to pick up a healthcare for retirees at a half a million dollars. So, we've got to find a half a million dollars, we've got to find a lot of funds. And so, I, I am comfortable, because I have faith in the city manager, that if he says $80,000, $80,000, I think that most likely, in the next upcoming year, we're going to have to, most likely, be looking at some aggressive funding streams, or aggressive funding reductions in, in some areas, and I, I think that this is appropriate. And I think that we should maybe take a look at additional steps in, in how to either reduce that number or gain funding to support those. So, $80,000, I'm very comfortable with that reduction.
Member Nelson?
I think we do, I think we do need to look at each of the events and sort of have the staff rate them in terms of what is the most valued to our city. Is this, this is a greater value than this, maybe this project over here? And have a ranking of which ones should be funded. I think the downtown street parties are something that brings a lot of benefit to the downtown area, and I suspect over the next year, two years, it's going to be even more important to have the street parties and have people come down there. I think it's going to add the value to that property and to our lives. But, that being said, I think that we need to have a ranking of which, which events are, create more value for our city than maybe other events.
If I could, ma'am, we're not asking council to-
If I could, ma'am, we're not asking council to, at this time, to do anything with the event requests.
Right.
What we're going to do is, I have to put a number into the budget. That's what I'm requesting council to do tonight. During the budget workshops, you'll have ample time to discuss all of these special events with, generally speaking, they, they, the people that want the event will come before council during the budget build.
Okay. I have no problem with 80,000, then. But I think this is something we, we, at some point, we're going to have to look at.
That's absolutely true. Member Diesel?
And I was just going to get that clarification, what we were doing tonight, and that is the approval of the 80,000 limit. I think we all looked at the numbers and saw them going higher and higher and higher. And I agree with, uh, Member Nelson, we're going to end up looking at some rankings, but I think we're also needing to look at some shared costs. And again, coming from my background, I can't help but think of, uh, you know, we just had 11 Titusville police officers at the Titusville High School graduation, and the SGA paid for those. You don't, I don't expect to see them here in front of the city to say, we need the city to pay for our police support. We have an event, we know it's coming, we need to support it. So, as much as I love all these things, I love fireworks, I love parades, I love, uh, street parties, we have got to look at some shared expense. I love graduations, but the, there are some places where shared expense has to take place.
Very good. Anyone else? Okay, what's your pleasure? Do we approve $80,000? Somebody would like to make a motion?
Comment? I'll make that motion.
Motion, we're here in a second. I have a motion in a second. Uh, any discussion? All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? Like, sign, passes unanimously. Next item is petitions and requests from the public present. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak? I see none. Uh, next item is mayor and council reports. You have my report attached. Counsel, does anyone have any reports they would like to make? I see none. City Manager?
Yes, sir, I have one action item. The FY 2018 state legislative session will commence in January 2018 instead of in March this year. Florida League of Cities is currently soliciting input from its member cities on its annual legislative conference, which is held mid-August. Attached to the City of Titusville's legislative priorities from 2017, for your reference, staff is requesting council's input for the FY 2018 city legislative priorities to be submitted before the Florida League of Cities prior to the August workshop. Your input is requested by the 13 June council meeting. Next, I've got information items on the bus shelters, an update on the bus shelters, as well as an update on the Titus Landing projects. And laid out in each one of the areas for the Titus Landing project are the information that we need to proceed with the loan. You see, some were submitted, some were not. We are now in possession of everything that we need to move forward with the loan agreement, and we should, as I say in the bottom of my comments, we will convene a special meeting to approve the loan agreement upon approval of the loan. So, we expect that to be done next week. So, we'll be getting with council once the, the loan agreement is complete, and we will bring that back before council for a resolution to expend the funds.
Any discussion?
And two more items, sir. City Hall will be closed on Monday, the 29th, which is in observance of Memorial Day. In addition, American Legion Post One will be holding their annual ceremony at Veterans Park at 10 o'clock. And we also have added the, before our next council meeting, the splash pad ribbon cutting on 10 June, 10 o'clock, and some other information items on the budget hearing workout. Subject questions?
I have a request. Would you send to me, and I assume, I would guess the rest of the council as well, what we sent last year to the state?
It's in your packet, sir.
Is that, is, there was only two of them?
That's it.
Oh, I thought there was more.
No, sir, that was all.
Okay. I, I did read those. Thank you. Uh, next up is, uh, city, the city managers. City Attorney, do you have anything?
No, sir, I'll just be reminding council about your ethics training and your disclosure forms that have to be filed in July, so I'll send you an email out.
All right, thank you very much. Anybody else have anything for the good of the order?
I have one, sir.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, and thank you, sir. And for council's consideration or discussion. So, um, as I do believe that in, in the upcoming year, we are potentially looking at an extreme loss of revenue, I, I think that we're going to take a huge hit on ad valorem. Because of that, I think that most, I'm under the impression that most cities are going to do one of two things, cut services or raise taxes through the roof. I think that the potential of, of many municipalities going to 10% is a, is a reality, or going to fee for service, um, which, not exciting either. So, none of those are great, but, you know, one of the, uh, not fun parts of this job, I think, is that finding revenue streams for the city to assist with costs is, is part of this, and it's an appropriate role in council. So, you know, one of the things that I know that year, for years, we, we really kind of wrangled with is, you know, for emergency services, funding, and so forth and so on. So, for our fire rescue, I look at, you know, what are the, what are they doing in the day? And I think that a predominant amount of their calls are medical calls. I think that, that, that is a, a large part of what they do. Uh, and then I think, okay, well, what are the causes of those medical calls? And I go, heart attack and fall down, and so forth and so on. And I believe that cardiac arrest is a part of that. So, I go, well, why are they out there running on cardiac arrest all the time? And then I get down to smoking, right? So, I go, links to smoking is, is a possibility. So, one thing I, you know, for council to think about, or, I think that there's an opportunity relative to a rel, a revenue stream for a, a potential tax within city limits on cigarettes. Excuse me, excuse me.
No, sir, that's preempted by the state.
Oh, my apologies.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. All right. Nothing happening, thank you. All right.
Yeah, I sent you an update on that today.
All right, thanks, sir.
Yes, sir.
I, I want to point out something that, you made a comment before, and it's certainly true, that the, everybody votes when they think it's not going to, it's going to cost them less than their taxes. It's really not going to do that. The amount that is coming off is going to, it doesn't come off the top, it winds up coming off the bottom, so that those people that have the less expensive homes can actually wind up paying nothing. Well, certain amount of money, as you pointed out, the cities or municipalities and counties need a certain amount to do, so they raise the rates. It's that balance. When you raise the rates, the ones that have to pay for it are the people who are still there that are taxable. So, it gets closed in from the bottom, and the people that are there pay it. So, it, it's a, a political, I don't know what to call it, boondoggle, that the state or whoever puts these things up plays on our populace, because they think they're getting 25% off, but they're not, because their insurance, their insurance, their taxes are going to go up, and the only people that will benefit from it are the people who may be paying very little or nothing after that. So, just keep that in mind.
Yes, sir, to, to add to your point, too, we believe that it will have a, a major impact on our commercial-
Yeah.
...properties. And an additional, you can exempt a rental property, so we believe that it will also have a big pass-through to our rental properties. We don't know what that effect is, but again, the, when commercial properties raise rates and for goods and services, that will get eventually passed back to the taxpayer. So, it's, it's just-
It's, it's, it's a smoke and mirrors thing, as far as I'm concerned, and, and we keep getting duped by the same thing, year after year. You know, you just can't take money away as, as you are finding out, without it having an effect somewhere else. Either we have to lay people off, or we have to get additional funds through raising taxes. And, uh, we try to keep a very lean budget, as lean as we can, uh, and people say, oh, yeah, there's so much fat. Well, we commissioned a group of people several years ago who all thought they could find the fat, and they didn't. They came back and said, we can't find anything. You, you, the city is very well-run, the police department, the fire department, uh, everybody, budgets got examined, so, uh, it kind of hurts when we hurt ourselves, I guess, is what I'm saying, and nobody seems to understand that. Anyway, I'll get off that soapbox. Any, any other discussions? Sir?
One real quick.
Yes?
Um, as the school year ends, I, I can't help but say thank you to Ms. Busaka for her continuous, she hasn't told many people this, I'm sure. She mentors some of our students on a, at least a weekly basis. I see her at lunch very often. And, um, to her and to the many other mentors I see, but to her specifically, she kind of quietly comes in and has lunch with certain students, and I'm sure makes a big difference, and then quietly leaves. So, I, I just want you to know that's noticed, and, and I appreciate that very much, as I do the other mentors that quietly make a difference. Thank you.
You're here, thank you. Anything else from anyone? If not, we have completed our agenda. I'll call this meeting adjourned.